Good evening, it's seven PM. Today is March eighth, first meeting of the month of March. We have a core presence, Kelvin Gomez, Alvin Velo, Tom Castiel, and Mayor Tim Foulis are with us this evening. We'll start off our meeting with a invocation. I'm going to ask our city manager to lead us in prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Bauer, head. "O God, from the law, power, by whose divine will all must abide. We thank you for our civil liberties and freedom, for our opportunities and our privileges. We beg of you to bless, assist, and enlighten the council members of our great city. May they prove worthy of the compliments placed in them by their fellow citizens. May they be just and upright in their thinking, honest in all their actions, and ever be guided by a true conscience, to forgive us all our mistakes and selfish tendencies, and help repair us by our good deeds for an eternal union with you through Christ our Lord. Amen."
Now, so we have minutes for the meeting. Let's take a moment to make any changes that are necessary as we entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
We approve the minutes from February twenty-third, two thousand twelve, as stated.
Second motion?
I'll say aye.
Motion by Castiel, second, by Gomez, to approve the minutes from February twenty-third as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Item one, item two A's. Consideration action approved streets, street closure of C Street between third and fourth for the annual Chamber of Commerce Market Day. Jerry Cutser will lead, he'll be representing, he'll represent the chamber.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor and council, we appreciate it. We've been doing this. The chamber's been involved in the market day for a number of years, I understand, twenty-something years. And we would like to welcome the south half of C Street, the third and fourth, where the band sits up for the female festival.
So what day is this, Jerry?
It's on May the fifth.
May the fifth, okay. Can you tell us some of the activities we're involved in, Jerry?
We're going to try to have more farmer's market type of things this year, kind of have fresh produce. I mean, see if I can get Johnny Hearsaw from the alternative school, if he wants to sell any plants that he didn't get sold this week at his plant sale, try to get them to come out. But we're going to try to get as much fresh produce. I think there's a number of local growers that go to Earl Brewery in San Antonio every week, so we're going to try to get them to stay home that week and come over here. And any of those, try to have as much local produce as we can have available.
And if somebody wants to set up, set up a room or a chamber space, contact the chamber?
Yeah, make it contact me, or contact the chamber.
Okay.
What are the hours, Jerry?
Nine AM to three AM. We'll set up between seven and nine, so we don't close the street starting at seven in the morning till three in the morning.
Any other questions, council? Any concerns about the thing?
No, Mayor. Jerry Cutser will coordinate with Sherry and MFP, and will take care of anything that they can, or city assistance and then the closing department.
As far as cleanup, now, I know if you're into dance festival, we all have a problem with somebody always digging some back of oil leak. We'll be responsible for, you know, oil leaks, and you might better let them handle it.
First of all, it'll be a combined effort. I know that the chamber does hire people to keep the area clean during their event, and then if I have to double check, we'll send some city crews to make sure that everything's okay.
You read the motion?
I make a motion to approve street closure of C Street between third and fourth feet for the annual Chamber of Commerce Market Day.
Motion by Foulis, second, by Gomez, to approve the closure for the Chamber of Commerce Market Day on May the fifth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries four zero. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you all very much.
Consideration action received on fiscal resolution for the upcoming Saturday, April twenty-eighth, Wilson Area Housing Foundation's tenth annual cowboy breakfast.
I'm not staying for much longer than that.
When it reads like this, whereas the Wilson Area Housing Foundation was organized to provide housing improvements for families that burdened the school district's health offices for the purpose of improving the residential environment of students and tenants at the schools and living counties. The tenth annual cowboy breakfast will provide financial support by the foundation to ticket sales at live and sudden auctions. Whereas breakfast plates will be on sale for eight dollars on the table of partnership and senior sponsorship supporting activities of the foundation. Now therefore be resolved, City Council, through your own, as hereby support the social services office, activities related to families in need of residential assistance, and hereby urge the community and community businesses to support the tenth annual R&R Cowboy Breakfast, which initially will be located at Sacred Heart Parish Hall, Parish Grounds, and urge support for said community event. For tickets, sponsorship, donation, lock, schneid, and more information concerning the event, contact Richard Stapleton. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? I'll make the motions, first of all.
Where does it have, Helen?
Mr. Stapleton?
Sacred Heart.
This will be our second here, then.
We can call these numbers for donation, lock, schneid.
I'm sorry?
Do we just call these, this number here?
Yes, sir.
These numbers here for donation, lock, schneid?
Right, okay.
Richard Stapleton, or a friend that moves secretary in an officer, ours will take any calls for donations.
So what are the sponsorships, uh, what was?
A thousand dollars, five hundred, and two fifty, and a hundred. And that'd be based on how many, how many tables, how many seats you get on the table, based on how much you contribute.
Any other questions, council?
I'd like to mention one thing about...
Please.
We give all our deeds to the social worker at school, which is Ben Reed. Ben Reed was just the number two social worker in the state of Texas. And that's quite an honor for a city of our size, you know, compared to number one, which Houston. So we have a lot to be proud of, despite our...
Yes, we do. Thank you, Rachel, for bringing that up.
Do you want the resolution?
Yes, our city secretary didn't get it signed, but I'm there.
You have a motion, council?
I know that we approved a resolution for the April twenty-eighth, two thousand twelve, Russell Area Housing Foundation's tenth annual cowboy breakfast.
I second the motion. Motion by Castiel, second, by Foulis, to approve the resolution for the Saturday, April twenty-eighth, Wilson Area Housing Foundation's cowboy breakfast. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries four zero. Next item, consideration action, for town agrees agreement with the city of Forests, Lakeview, Practical PC, LLC, DDA, and Upland Communications at B Street Water Tower site. And I'm assuming since it's, we have it in contract form, everybody has agreed to, to surprise everything that's contained in the contract?
Mayor, I am seeing, and D will work on by Sherry Bullock and our city attorneys, so I'll pass it to them to give you all the information and background on that soon.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. I did speak with Mr. Mullin, and the contractors you have, there is a revision to it. One of the things that he is asking that we do is to give him, the frequencies that are out there, we allow another internet company to come put a box up on the water tower, that his frequencies be protected first. So basically, what we's going to do is we'll have an addendum, that list of frequencies that he's using, and it will be up to that second internet provider that comes in to make sure that their bandwidth is outside of those frequencies. It will be told to them as soon as the contract comes to table, that we have somebody that's currently using this set of frequencies, and that way they can come up with a contract where we can allow other people to put, to lease space on that same tower, and it won't interfere with these other businesses.
Will we, will that affect everything with the existing lease?
No, sir, it will not. B Street Tower currently has no, nothing on it. It's empty, it doesn't have anything. This will be the first lease on the B Street Tower. The B Street Tower, the internet access from there is also going to allow the industrial park that's out on five thirty-seven, access to internet as well. So that's going to get, there'll be a line of sight where they'll be able to have access to that from the B Street Tower.
And who will have access to all that?
Top Gun Communications, Kurt Mullin, is who is trying to go into the lease agreement with us. He has agreed on the amount that we put in there. I sat down and talked to him, explained to him why that was out there. It's competitive to the other lease agreements that we have with other companies currently on separate towers, so we're kind of keeping it, just staying across the board for everything.
This is only for commercial, correct?
Right now, he's only allowing commercial, he's only offering it to commercial, he's got hotspots downtown. The more he upgrades his systems, the closer we are to being able to have some residential internet service.
And what internet service is he using again?
He's feeding off the main line. It's still going to be broadband, it's not connected fiber, but it is the main line in.
So the agreed on rent is four fifty a month?
It's actually four hundred a month, sir. We went back and evaluated and spoke with him. We're currently getting four hundred a month for the leases that are out there, and they go for another year from this year, so four hundred a month will be agreed on for two years. After two years, we can go back and remit the contract.
Okay, the contract we have is four fifty?
It does, that's the original contract after our meeting today, this afternoon, is where those changes are. The changes in there about the frequency are also not in that contract. We brought a copy with those changes in it, and we'll have those available once we signature.
Mr. Mayor, if I could pick up just a moment. This is kind of a situation where be careful what you ask for, the lawyer may go into detail. I want to cover a couple items, because the council, Sherry came back to me with a couple questions, and there's a couple items, if you don't mind, I'm going to take just a couple minutes to brief you on this, that I think are important. Number one, using your tower site does have homeland security implications, and I provided in here that access will be through the police department, a notice to the police department. The reason homeland security comes in is because your tower sites for your water are required to be barbed wire protected, they're supposed to be off limits to anybody that's not in the water utility business, and we're required as a matter of federal law to maintain certain standards. So that's an access issue that I've developed in there, and the manager can speak to that more clearly. One of the other things I want to talk about is the construction requirement that's in the draft that you had before you had the draft four. I've required that there be a wind evaluation for any dish or physical facility located on the tower. This is both an FCC requirement and a liability issue, and this would be both for this current applicant or tenant, and any future tenant. And that's simply to make sure that we don't have something attached to your tower that's going to rip it apart in the event of a windstorm like you've seen recently on the national news. It's an FCC requirement. The other thing that's come up, and Mr. Bullock was very careful to make sure I was aware of this, is the question about the spectrum that's being used and the requirements for that spectrum. And one of the things that Mr. Mullin asked for is a guarantee from the city that we not allow somebody else on the site with competitive spectrum. And we provided in here that if they follow the FCC requirements, there are two entities here that will do the scrutiny, and make sure that the system is covered for spectrum protection for the existing L C, but it also requires that there be coverage and protection for us if he chooses to go to non-regulated entities. So I've put some details in here that brings this document up to date. I've also made sure that you're covered with property insurance in case there's damage to the tower. And lastly, I want to call your attention to the fact that the site where he gets his electricity is to be separately metered, so it doesn't get commingled with your utility requirements for your own operation of the tank site. In other words, he's got to have a separate pad, a separate cell connection, and separate utilities going up and down the tower. So there's a good bit of detail in this that Sherry has not seen, and Mr. Mullin, quite frankly, has not seen. But I did not want to bring something to you that didn't have the benefit of updated FCC, updated homeland security, and updated requirements. I've done about four of these, and the time I've done these has been about a year apart, and I've tried to bring them into conformity with current law. So if Mr. Mullin should be given time to look at this and determine what is acceptable to him, what I'd ask the council to do tonight is to provide an approval provisionally with Sherry's price, as she's quoted in Mr. Bullock's four hundred. And then I do want to comment that I provided two-year renewals with a renewal figure of not less than that price plus the cost of living, all items indexed increase. And that's with both parties' agreement to go to that higher figure. It may be point two percent, or it may be point five percent increase, depending on whatever the cost of living increases. But this is a ten-year lease.
Mayor?
Yes?
What will the equipment, the towers, and the meters, and whatever needs to be installed, what will that do to the aesthetics of the water tower?
Well, depending on how big a dish he puts up there, whether it's a six-foot dish, which is, which is sort of typical, and FCC-type approved, it's the Class A dish, you're going to see a dish up there, I don't think it's going to be that ugly, but you have seen towers in some parts of San Antonio where there's a whole ring of items around it, but I don't think you're going to have that here for two reasons. One is, we're still relatively small in terms of demand, and number two, if he follows the rules of the FCC here, there'll be free clearance on anybody else up there, and they're usually, for a small tower, pretty limited on how many antennas you can place on top of the tower. But we're making the FCC standards, the control, I wanted to keep the city out of the business, of moderating between you and me. If you're the first one on there, and I come along and I'm second, I've got to show through two of these entities I've listed, which is X-Tex, or the SRT entity, the spectrum clearance and all of that's done by an independent agency, and they've got to come to us and show they comply with FCC if there's going to be a competitor on that site. So to answer your question for aesthetics, I don't think it's going to be too unsightly, but I was looking at this from the practical point, that a lot of people want the service. I'm just trying to make sure the city's not caught with either a security problem, a utility problem in terms of electricity, or a safety or insurance problem, that all those points get covered.
And I understand that. Will someone oversee the installation of all that?
I've referenced this, having been, having to be referred to the city engineer, because he's the only one that's technically proficient to know what FCC requirements are, and he may in turn refer it to an electrical engineer. The only thing that I've not really adequately covered, and I want to be very candid about this, is because he's got an issue on price, is whether or not our reviews should be reemerged by the applicant, or in this case, the tenant. That's why I think the price of four hundred is extremely reasonable. I don't know if you're aware of it, but that tower on Bypass one eighty-one, we've got stood up, it's about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar tower. He's getting on your tank, and we're building a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar tower. So four hundred dollars a month is pretty cheap compared to financing that tower, or pretty inexpensive. So my recommendation is for approval, but I want to be candid, Mr. Mullin has not seen my latest draft, so it'd be subject to his agreement.
Will?
I don't know if we table this.
Tell us to make that recommendation, also, Chris. Tom Castiel and Gomez makes a motion to table?
That's a good call, because we haven't had a chance to discuss it.
I second.
Second, by Castiel, all in favor of table an item? Say aye.
Aye.
Can we bring this, Mr. Mayor, can we bring this back up at the next meeting, so it facilitates the discussion with the council?
One thing I would like to ensure the council agrees is that we can see a conflict in, to see it in this final format, with agreed prices from all parties involved.
I had agreed to four fifty, so we might look at that again. I mean, just because someone else has a different price, doesn't matter.
I'll, I'll bring it up to him, I'll send him a copy of his current one that we brought with him, and we'll discuss it tomorrow, and try to have everything in together for discussion at the next meeting.
Going to item two D, consideration action approved, notice to ISI for contract, that competitive solicitations will be requested for city consideration. ISI is our garbage company, and our contract is coming up in September?
Our, the end of the contract is September, and if we decide to go out for RFQs, which is what we've been discussing inside tonight, we have to have the letter in by April the second. So we have a short period of time to get that out there, to give us enough time to go out for RFQs and negotiate a price before our contract ends.
Sure, can you tell us the pros and cons of going out for RFQs?
Sure, the, the pros to it are definitely the fact that we are able to get a lower rate, get better services. Going out for RFQs and requests for qualification versus requests for proposals, we can give them a list of things that we're going to require. We get the RFQs back, and at that point, we sit down and start go over pricing. So that kind of gives us in the ballpark of getting the services that we want, and then start working on a pricing schedule with that. The current, if we do go out for RFQs, our current carrier is eligible to send us an RFQ in. It would start a new contract, we wouldn't be updating our contract, we would start over from a new begin date, but they are eligible to, to have an RFQ out there with us. So the con to it, the, the only issue that would come up, is going out for an RFQ and the final contract, there are instances where the rates are higher than your current contract when you go out for RFQ. So that is a possibility. We have had the chance to meet with a couple of different people working on the trash project that Mr. Melness has tasked us to, and working with him. We have had other vendors that have come and spoke to us about what we were looking for as far as service and that kind of thing. We have not spoken about price, because we have not ended our contract with our current one, but some of the services that others have currently are out there.
Am I correct in saying that if we negotiate with a current contractor, that is still possible, is that a possibility?
Yes, if we don't, if we just, if we don't send them this letter, we do have the ability to negotiate with them, but once we negotiate with them, we cannot go out for RFQs. So if we negotiate the contract directly with them, and we would have to come up with an agreement with them, we wouldn't have other vendors that would be sending in their qualifications.
Let me interject, Jerry, that the, you know, we've been working for the last five to six months with different kind of providers, and, you know, one thing that we don't understand is that doors was actually the corridor going south. It opens a gate. Everything down south runs through doors. And couldn't go, Kennedy, current city with oil boom, we're in the position where, where they need us. And it's, it's been communicated to me by different waste management people who we've talked to, that everyone's trying to get ahead. And my main concern for this city is to create the necessity of having a good maintenance program for picking up trash. That was my main concern from the minute I sent this chair. It's going to be a, I, I believe that we should send them a notice, I believe that we should look into other avenues of creating the type of service we need for our citizens. The last time we were in this situation, we had weeks to figure out what we were going to do. This time, we've stepped ahead and we've got months. So it's something that we've been, we've received, we've been waiting for this, and I think that it's the appropriate thing to do to look at other entities and see what they have to offer towards them.
Mr. Mayor, the question that you're posed, that's posed on the agenda tonight, is to give notice or not to give notice. And basically, the recommendation from me as your council is to give the notice, because it gives you then the option of inviting the bid and opening the door for competition. If you don't give the notice, then you're stuck with negotiating with this vendor and an automatic renewal. And I brought the copy of the contract, so you can see what I'm talking about, and I've tagged it. And I've done that to all the council members. It says a blue tag there, and I think that's what Mr. Gomez has been working against. If you'll turn it up to that section, you'll see simply that if you don't exercise the option, then you're dealing with the existing vendor and whatever you can work out, and while it's a bilateral relationship, your leverage is just not there. So the recommendation is to send the notice, let the vendor compete with any other vendors, and take your proposals as they come in.
And the unfortunate thing about all that is that we've already set the rate. We can't give back the rate. So around five years ago, four years ago, when this came into play. But we can be made into a profit in creating our own waste managers.
And that's one of the things that going out for RFQs could include, is the option to be able to slowly start your own trash company, and have it written in there that you can drop your own trucks for certain numbers of days, and if the year goes on, the contract goes on. Those kinds of things could be written into the RFQ, so that it would be included in the contract when signed, because that is the route that Mr. Gomez would like to go, and we've done a lot of research on it. Not opening the RFQ probably wouldn't give us the option to be able to write that in our new contract.
And doing that would increase services maybe twice the rate that it was also wanting to be.
Right, maybe it's us more options in being able to add that service.
And create our own trash.
What's our timeframe for notice to ISI? So we have to have it done by April the second, and so our timeframe is going to be short. Our contract isn't up until September, so we have time to work out the RFQs and go into a contract and have it in place prior to the end of this contract, but we have to give them notice by April the second.
It's marked on the front page of the document we have here.
Hundred and eighty days would be April the second, so that's cool.
Well, I'm going to make the motion to approve the provide notice to ISI for a contract that competitive solicitations will be requested for city consideration.
Aye, sir. Motion by Gomez, second, by Foulis, to provide notice to ISI for a contract that competitive solicitations will be requested for city consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries four zero. Next item, consideration action included additional approximately five hundred feet of highway right of way to the historic survey debating marker for Las Cabanas on Highway ninety-seven West as part of recreation quarter annexation.
Mr. Mayor, this is something that was discussed, at least in, in part, in passing at the planning session that you had Saturday, the twenty-fifth, I think, when you did your best plan. And this came up both in the context of your M and S group, and in the context of the parks department. And my own initiative, two weekends ago, I went out and took the little pocket camera and walked the distance from the bridge covering the San Antonio River, which is Tally Park on the south, and the main city park on the north, and it's approximately five...
Or safety, or insurance problem, then all those points get covered.
And I understand that. Will someone oversee the installation of all that?
I've referenced this having been, having to be referred to the city engineer because he's the only one that's technically proficient to know what FCC requirements are, and he may in turn refer it to an electrical engineer. The only thing that I've not really adequately covered, and I want to be very candid about this, is because he's got an HEB price, is whether or not our reviews should be reemerged by the opposite, or in this case, the county. That's why I think the price of four hundred is extremely reasonable. I don't know if you're aware of it, but that tower on BIPAT 181, we've got stood up, is about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar tower. He's getting on your tank in Lewis Building, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar tower. So four hundred dollars a month is pretty cheap compared to financing that tower, or pretty inexpensive. So my recommendation is for approval, but I want to be candid, Mr. Mullin has not seen my latest draft, so it'd be subject to his agreement.
I don't know if we tagged this.
Does that make that recommendation also? Councilman Gomez makes motion to tag it?
That's a good call, because we haven't had a chance to discuss it.
Second, like, does these all have their own tagged items? May I?
Aye.
Can we bring this, Mr. Mayor, can we bring this back up at the next meeting, so we facilitate this discussion with them?
One thing I would like to ensure the council agrees is that we can see a contract that's, to see it in its final format, with agreed prices from all parties involved.
I had agreed to four fifty, so we might look at that again. Just because someone else has a different price, doesn't matter.
I'll, I'll bring it up to him, I'll send him a copy of this current one that we brought with him, and we'll discuss it tomorrow, and try to have everything in together for discussion at the next meeting.
Going to item two D, consideration action approved notice to ISI for contract that competitive solicitation will be requested for city consideration. ISI is our garbage company, and our contract is coming up in September?
Uh, the end of the contract is September, and if we decide to go out for RFQs, which is what we've been discussing this time tonight, we have to have the letter in by April the second. So we have a short period of time to get that out there to give us enough time to go out for RFQs and negotiate a price before our contract ends.
Okay, Sharon, can you tell us the pros and cons of going out for RFQs?
Sure, the, the pros to it are definitely the fact that we are able to get a lower rate, get better services. Going out for RFQs or requests for qualifications versus requests for proposals, we can give them a list of things that we're going to require. We give the RFQs back to the company, at that point we sit down and start go over pricing. So that kind of gives us in the ballpark of getting the services that we want, and then start working on a pricing schedule with that. The current, if we do go out for RFQs, our current carrier is eligible to send us an RFQ in. It would start a new contract, it wouldn't be updating their contract, it would start over from a new begin date, but they are eligible to, to have an RFQ out there with us. So the con to it, the, the only issue that would come up is going out for an RFQ and the final contract, there are instances where the rates are higher than our current contract when you go out for RFQ. So that is a possibility. We have had the chance to meet with a couple of different people working on the trash project that Mr. Gomez has tasked us to and working with him. We have had other vendors that have come and spoke to us about what we were looking for as far as service and that kind of thing. We have not spoken about price, because we have not ended our contract with our current one. But some of the services that others have currently are out there.
Am I correct in saying that if we negotiate with a current contract, that is still possi- is that a possibility?
Yes, if we don't, if with this, if we don't send them this letter, we do have the ability to negotiate with them, but once we negotiate with them, we cannot go out for RFQs. So if we negotiate the contract directly with them, then we would have to come up with an agreement with them, and we wouldn't have other vendors that would be sending in their qualifications.
Let me interject here, that the, you know, we've been working for the last five to six months with different kind of providers, and, you know, one thing that we don't understand is that doors was actually the corridor going south. It opens a gate. Everything down south runs through doors. And couldn't quote Kennedy, the current city with the war room, we're in the position where, where they need us. And it's, it's been communicated to me by different waste management people who we've talked to, that everyone's trying to get ahead. And my main concern for this city is to create the necessity of having a good maintenance program for picking up trash. That was my main concern from the minute I sent this chair. It's going to be a, I, I believe that we should send them a notice. I believe that we should look into other avenues of creating the type of service we need for our citizens. The last time we were in this situation, we had a week to figure out what we were going to do. This time, we've stepped ahead and we've got months. So it's something that we've been, we foresee, we've been waiting for this, and I think that it's the appropriate thing to do to look at other entities and see what they have to offer towards them.
Mr. Mayor, the, the question that you're posed, that's posed on the agenda tonight is to give notice or not to give notice. And basically, the recommendation from me as your council is to give the notice, because it gives you then the option of inviting the bids and opening the door for competition. If you don't give the notice, then you're stuck with negotiating with this vendor and an automatic renewal. And I brought the copy of the contract, you can see what I'm talking about, and I've tagged it. And I've done that for all the council members. It has a blue tag there. And I think that's what Mr. Gomez has been working against. If you'll turn it up to that section, you'll see simply that if you don't exercise the option, then you're dealing with the existing vendor and whatever you can work out. And while it's a bilateral relationship, your leverage is just not there. So the recommendation is to send the notice, let the vendor compete with any other vendors, and take your proposals as they come in.
And the unfortunate thing about all that is that we've already set the rate. We can't give back the rate. So around five years ago, four years ago, when this came into play. But we can be made into a profit in creating our own way of businesses.
And that's one of the things that going out for RFQs could include is the option to be able to slowly start your own trash company. Have it written in there that you brought your own trucks for certain numbers of days as the year goes on, the contract goes on. Those kinds of things could be written into the RFQ, so that it would be included in the contract when signed, because that is the route that Mr. Gomez would like to go, and we've done a lot of research on it. Not opening the RFQ probably wouldn't give us the option to be able to write that in our new contract.
And doing that or increase services maybe twice a week, maybe closer once a week?
Right. Maybe give us more options and be able to add that service.
And create our own trash.
What's your timeframe for notice to ISI? Uh, so we have to have it in by April the second. And so our timeframe is going to be short. Our contract isn't up until September, so we have time to work out the RFQs and go into a contract and have it in place prior to the end of this contract, but we have to give them notice by April the second.
It's marked on the front page of the document you have here.
Hundred and eighty days would be April the second, so that's cool.
Well, I'm going to make the motion to approve the provided notice to ISI for a contract that competitive solicitation will be requested for city consideration.
Motion by Gomez, second by Gomez, to provide notice to ISI for a contract that competitive solicitation will be requested by for city consideration. All of the members say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for the vote. Next item consideration, action include an additional approximately five hundred feet of highway right of way to the historic survey committee marker for Las Cabras on Highway ninety-seven west as part of recreation corridor annexation.
Mr. Mayor, this is something that was discussed at least in, in part in passing at the planning session that you had Saturday, the twenty-fifth, I think, when you did your best plan. And this came up both in the context of your M&amp;S group and in the context of the Parks Department. And my own initiative, two weekends ago, I went out and took the little pocket camera and walked the distance from the bridge covering the San Antonio River, which is Tally Park on the south and the main city park on the north. And it's approximately five hundred feet, more or less, to where the historical survey marker is located. And that's the entrance going south to the Las Cabras location that we know something about, but not a great deal. And in talking with the several people here from the National Park Service, they were relatively excited by the prospect that the city might extend its boundary to the entranceway, which would then provide a connecting link between two governmental entities if they ever choose to be more active down there. You're probably also aware, since the clipping to the city, about Senator K. Bailey Hutchison including some money in the Carteiers Corporation for making investigation and some direct improvements in Las Cabras. So you have a recreation corridor annexation plan as a result of what you moved to approve on November two thousand and ten. And that's coming into play in the very near future through your M&amp;S planning and the survey that's just been completed. And what this will require would be simply a finger down the road, extending the survey, the extra five hundred feet, more or less, to the entranceway to Las Cabras, so your recreation corridor will be complete. And I'm just making this recommendation to do this while you have the opening to include this in the planning process.
Any questions, council, any discussion, staff recommendations?
Staff recommendations is that we, the council approved this, we just move forward. It's just, like Lou said, approximately five hundred feet, just to get us to the marker.
Do we have a motion though? First one discussion?
I'll make a motion to include the additional approximately five hundred feet of highway right of way to the historic survey committee marker for Las Cabras on Highway one, Highway ninety-seven west as part of the recreation corridor annexation.
Motion by Guedelos, second by Gomez, to include additional approximately five hundred feet of highway right of way to the historic survey committee marker for Las Cabras on Highway ninety-seven west as part of recreation corridor annexation. All of the members say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for the vote. Mr. Johnson, you want to introduce our employee of the month?
You know, that Miss Fodder, she just pulled energy and I said she'd handle this.
Alrighty.
Hello. Our employee of the month this month was suggested to us by his supervisor. He's been a very big asset to the city of Porchville since he started just a year ago in March. Let me just read to you what Joe Jimenez, who was our employee of the month last month, has to say about his employee. He says that Larry has been a real asset to the wastewater plant in the city of Porchville. Larry has been with the city for one year this month and has shown a lot of wastewater knowledge in the plant, plus mechanical and ability to improvise in all phases of the operation. He is a real team player, and I am sure that the city has saved a lot of money through his ability and can-do attitude. I wish I had a few more of him. He's always there when I need him. So he's absolutely, he's been our most guy out there. He keeps things running. When, when Joe is out or Joe is not there, we know that things are running slowly. Larry's there. He's also an awesome team player. One of the other places need help. He's, he's the first one that's, that's there to do it. So Larry, we appreciate everything that you do for us. You do a great job. We very much appreciate it. We know that this last year, with all of the changes going out of the sewer plant, the new equipment that's out there, learning all of the new processes, adding all of the new stations, has been a huge uptake. We very much appreciate it.
You gotta go up to the council?
You gotta go take a picture with the council.
You gotta go up to the, the back.
Thank you, sir.
I don't think you can stop me. Wait, you moved the chairs, you can see me.
Better?
Counselor, if you feel a counsel's floor is being approached, please.
There we go. Good analysis.
Thank you. Mr. Virgil, you want to talk to us about the city cemetery?
Do I? Yeah, they try to intimidate with these black, with blacks. flags that I mentioned before, size, I'm behind you there, three by eight, three by five. And I'm going to give the HEB the, the first opportunity to provide this flag. One of the reasons is, one, I'm going to be right behind HEB there, and then the other one's on the, three will be on the high point, like the city cemetery up high, and, oh, the Canary Islands, yeah. I was, I walked the Canary Islands this afternoon and actually bragged about, placed high, and it's all after snake time to come. And I think, you know, if HEB turns this down, probably give a second opportunity to Lou Rosenberg Law Firm.
Thanks, sir.
You haven't found the Las Cabras cemetery yet, have you?
I'm following Lynch. I think they'll want to give a little one a while, I don't know. You don't have to get a picture of me, but you can get a picture of that three by five flag. Okay, let me just move on. I'm reminded, I'm reminded that two and a half months from now is when we want to have our Memorial Day celebration at the city cemetery, so it's coming up fast. It's good to see it's partially mowed, probably half mowed, and, you know, with the, with the water and other things, nice. And the amount of rain we're going to have, we're supposed to have in the next two or three days. I mean, the gophers and the fire ants and the red ants are going to be, you know, which raised the question, has anything been done about, I, I talked to, to Lopez over there, and he said he hadn't heard from the state. But I thought his bid was a good starting point, which was two thousand dollars split up four ways with a year's contract. And so anyway, I appreciate it. If we look at the lap, and because we're really, well, I wore a hat, there's just also red ant bears up after these rains, or there'll be, there'll be, I forgot to mention, I spent four bucks on a, on a, hold on, I forget, a jalapeno deal, or habanero number three. And I guarantee you one thing, it'll kill those gophers. And I don't, I don't think the guys that put it out will be drinking it either. But I get off the stuff. Oh, another thing I noticed around several cemeteries is a bunch of dead mesquite and oak trees. And that makes excellent barbecue or firework. And I think I could get somebody to not only take those down, but do a lot of other cleanup trees, because that's, that's pretty radical to have that much wood, good wood. And so my point is, if there's hack berry or jump trees, they should also get them down. I'd appreciate, Captain Castillo getting me a little sign that, that it'll see us method church, you know, I, that's the last time I've been disappointed with the Hispanic interest in those cemetery events. So I would like to challenge them, because I know several members there. And so if you can do that, just call me. If this Sunday is not possible, I know they, they start at ten, I believe.
Right, I'll talk to the pastor.
Yeah, we appreciate it. We have, oh, the other, I'm going to get more detail on expense that is, is hard to find out. I think the city cemetery's construction will be repaved within the next two months. About the tree and the plant problems out there, I, I talked to the person that are pretty much experts in trees, and we need to be sure, we have plenty of fertilizer and stuff like that down for those great merles and that fertilizer and compost, whatever needs to be done. So I'll try to handle it on the meeting, and there's need, some figures for it on that. Oh, the fence, the fence against the city cemetery is approximately fifteen thousand dollars, to my knowledge, and I'll, I'll double check that. We have a meeting, the social, ours will be, uh, Jax the fifteenth, the week of today, and we appreciate the city being represented there. I mean, well, we'll have somebody from the funeral, one of the funeral hosts, I think Mr. Franklin. And that's from eleven thirty to one o'clock. And that's about it. Just some questions. Any questions, Council?
Johnson, we did get one or two, except one cemetery didn't have it.
Yes, so they ran in the area that he wanted at the, the new cemetery, we're still looking at the other areas that he wanted, the other cemetery, to see what the expenses can be. And all of his concerns that he listed, I wrote them down in my boardroom. And I believe Carolyn Palazas is going to make the meeting, the cemetery meeting next.
I have one of those flags, you know, it means that I, you don't keep up all the time, and we talked about that, to take it up and down for special occasions, I type these. Anyhow, if you want to see it, I have one.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Mr. Russell? We have one question.
So, you visited other churches, right?
I'm going to.
Oh, you are going to. What kind of presentation are you making?
Well, it's just like the African-American group, how do you make a presentation in God, because their, their cemeteries are, well, they actually have three, I thought it was that part of it. And they need a lot of attention. You know, it's not all the city's responsibility on this top.
So what is your expectation of the church, on the church?
Well, I, I think a church has been, of the logical people to be responsible.
Clean up, go over, killing or?
Somehow I work with the city, for example, just like that situation at the Canary Islands, it'd be hard to get rid of mold, or something like that. And, right, there's been one of those cemeteries.
One of the city cemeteries.
Yeah, the city cemetery too, you know, they're lit off.
I mean, there's another one, um, in Coles, that's, that's out of the city.
Well, and that one's down by the river, you know, there's, it's about twenty yards wide, about a hundred yards deep, and the river's right down there. Coles kind of, I started riding down a bunch of that Spanish, you know, some old stones are so, it's so old. It's, it's very interesting. I think it would be very interesting to, to Spanish to get in there and actually look.
Well, what I was getting to is, are you expecting participation in cleanup or donation, or what is it?
Either one, all we do, all we do is that money. No, I think most of it on the churches themselves will be a participation. And because there's many rivalries out there that have rivalries.
Right.
And that, that, and so I, I think, you know, we've got a source, and they've already planted some more plants in there, like, you know, the city cemetery, and there's some other deals worth of the temporary flowers, it earlier, they, they could.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Council. Item B, a discussion item regarding vehicles carrying hazardous materials. Gomez?
I think this was more directed on, actually parking vehicles. Let me just say this, we had, not long ago, we had opened up the little trailer park, okay? And if I may, and I asked the attorney, that a lot of times, you know, we're talking about the entries and, and the safety of, of, of emergency vehicles going in and out in case there's a fire, whatever the case might be. But it's weird that when I drive down these, these, that highway, that I see eighteen wheelers park, and those RV parks. I see, they, they put up lights, right? You can go right now, I guarantee you they're sitting right in front. To me, that's a hazard. I think more to the point where we should make an ordinance or something to tell them they can't park there. They should not be allowed to park there. Something happens there, and they're carrying chemicals, those things carry chemicals, corrosive, whether it's flammable, whatever the case might be. And if you think that not parking something there won't create that, there's a leak, you're not going to have the fire department buying that, I guarantee you that. You're going to need a hazmat. And I think that, for me, I think that's an issue, or a security issue, and not only a security issue for, but a problem for, for citizens if something happens in an RV park.
Lou, could you see what other cities are doing in Eagle Ford area to address some of the issues that Councilman is talking about? Not only that RV parks, but also vehicles traveling through, through the community?
Yeah, I thought that up three months ago, but I mean, just a, a route detour, get them out of the city, that, on that, because I mean, how would it be for you want? You don't want to come here and be down.
Councilman Gomez, let me say two things. We do have an ordinance on the RV parks, and the ordinance does provide some provisions for parking. Unfortunately, I don't think it's specific about the size of the parking, but I will look, look at that because I've been asked to help with the invoicing and renewal of the parking permits, not the parking permits, but RV permits for this, this current cycle we're in. So I'll look at that with Ms. Nichols, and we'll include that on some kind of report for the twenty-second. The other thing I'm going to tell you is I do have some experience with a hazmat problem. You probably don't recall this, but Congressman Gonzalez, after the blow up on the UP site there in Hollins Park quite a few years ago, they had some, it's right next to the golf court.
I've never really discussed that.
They had the problem. And the real difficulty is, is that you're required to establish alternate routes. And it was probably close to fifteen years before San Antonio complied with the requirement for the HC, or the H, whatever it is.
Right.
Marks the hazard of route.